Please rise for the Pledge of Legions. The Pledge of Legions should apply in the United States to the Interior Department, which is a one nation under the business of liberty and justice. Please remain standing for a moment of silent reflection for all our servicemen and women throughout the world, and for those who have passed away in our community, especially retired police corporal Anthony John Gillette Jr. And City Council would like to offer our deepest condolences to Tim Perry and his family on the passing of Lori Perry. Tim Perry was a former city councilman, and Lori was a dedicated employee of the city of Scranton, and she will be deeply missed. Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mr. King? Mr. Schuster?
Present.
Dr. Rothschild?
Here.
Mr. McAndrew?
Present.
Mr. Snorl?
Here. Spence with reading of minutes.
Third Order 3A, Lackawanna County Planning Commission Subdivision and Land Development Evaluation Report received January 28, 2025. 3B, correspondence received from City Business Administration on January 30, 2025 regarding updated payroll preparation tax collections as of January 28, 2025. 3C, correspondence dated January 30, 2025 from City Business Administration regarding parks and recreation budget transfer. 3D, overtime report for all departments for January 2025 as provided by the City Controller received February 3, 2025.
Are there any questions on any of the third order items? If not, received and filed. Do any council members have any announcements at this time?
I have a couple. So I'll start off with Valentine's weekend, there'll be a food drive. It's at Naug Parks Community Room. It'll be Saturday, February 15, from 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. It'll also be Sunday, February 16, from 12:00 p.m. to 3:00 p.m. And I know on social media, there's a list of non-perishable items that they're actually looking for, you can check out before you get there. Secondly, we have a very special birthday in our city, and to give you a little background on it, her name is Dorothy E. Evans. She's celebrating her 100th birthday. Dorothy E. Evans was born on February 5, 1925, to Harry and Marie Briel on Willow Street in South Scranton. She was the second of five children educated in the Catholic school system. She graduated from St. Mary's High School. She furthered her education as a U.S. Army Nurse Cadet at Mercy Hospital School of Nursing during World War II. She completed her studies and became a registered nurse. In 1947, she married William H. Evans, and in 1949 subsequently moved to West Elm Street in West Scranton, where she spent the next 70 years raising six children, creating a warm, healthy environment for all. She was very active in Catholic Church community and its social clubs, serving in many roles. She was also a den mother for the Cub Scouts and assistant in Little League baseball activities. She was a neighborhood nurse, always here to help in emergency situations requiring medical assistance. She also volunteered at Geisinger Community Center for many years, receiving recognition in her years of service to the health community. She is the grandmother of 15 and great-grandmother of nine beautiful children. Dorothy currently resides independently at Lutherwood in South Scranton. So a very happy birthday to Mrs. Evans, and God bless her. And last, this week is School Counselor Week, so we have a proclamation for that. So whereas the city, I'm sorry, whereas the Council of the City of Scranton is desirous for acknowledging national school counselors, as the nation celebrates National School Counseling Week, February 3 through 7, 2025. And whereas the school counselors are employed in public and private schools to help students reach their full potential. And whereas school counselors are actively committed to helping students explore their abilities, strengths, interests, and talents, as these traits relate to career awareness and development. And whereas school counselors help families focus on ways to further the academic career and social and emotional development of their children. And whereas school counselors work with teachers and other educators to help students explore their potential and set realistic goals for themselves. And whereas school counselors seek to identify and utilize community resources that can enhance and complement comprehensive school counseling programs, and students become productive members of society. And whereas comprehensive school counseling programs are considered an integral part of the educational process that enables all students to achieve success in school. So now therefore, be it resolved that on Tuesday, February 4, 2025, Scranton City Council wishes to recognize school counselors for their dedication and commitment to the advancement and well-being of all students from kindergarten through grade 12. Be it further resolved that this proclamation be made a permanent part of the record of this council and a lasting tribute to National School Counseling Week 2025. Thank you, that is all I have.
Thank you.
I have a few announcements. Thank you to our school counselors, and happy School Counselor Week. I also wanted to say that it's Black History Month, that started on Saturday, February 1. And I think it's a great time to just be able to reflect on Black history and even learn a little bit more about Black history, maybe something that you haven't known about it before. And just to recognize all of the African-American leaders that we've had in our country in years past. Also, Blacks Scranton, the Blacks Scranton Project, they always have several events taking place around this month, so if you're interested in participating in any of those, I'd encourage you to visit their website or their social media to find out more about what events they're hosting. They did do a great kickoff event on Saturday. And also wanted to mention the Garden of Cedar. This time of year, they start accepting Valentine hearts, so if you want to fill out a heart, you can, and they do a wonderful display that they've done for a few years now. I always enjoy going there and seeing all the hearts out across the garden, and walking through and seeing the different names and people that are placed on them and messages. So if you want to put in a request for a message to be on one of those hearts, you can go to the gardenofcedar.org website, or visit their Facebook page to find out more about that. And then, one last thing that I wanted to bring up during this time, because I'm not sure if there will be questions or speakers about it, so I just wanted to provide some information prior to public comment about the Code Blue shelter. So there was an issue Saturday evening with the Code Blue shelter. Originally, it was reported that it was not going to open, and it was going to be very cold that evening with temperatures dropping down to nine degrees, and then I was aware that it was not opening because of staffing issues. So staffing issues aren't on the part of the city of Scranton. We do have staff that goes there and opens the facility for its use, but it's actually Keystone Mission, their organization, that provides the staff that stays overnight with any unsheltered people that are there. And so they're specifically trained to do that, and they have to be employed by Keystone Mission, and so they had some sick employees that were out, and we did get them thankfully to be able to open. Actually, the director of Keystone Mission went down there herself and staffed it, so we are really grateful for that. And Councilman Snorl, myself, also went down there to just make sure that everything opened smoothly and that people were able to get access to the building and had everything that they needed for that night. So I'm really glad that those individuals did not need to stay out in that cold of weather. The problem was compounded with the fact that St. Anthony's, which is an overnight shelter that is open nightly, that's not just for when temperatures drop like the Code Blue shelter is. But they also had staffing issues, and they weren't open. So there really wasn't anywhere for these people to go. And that, you know, that just breaks my heart, and I don't want to see that happen, and I knew I'd be up all night worrying about them. So I'm glad that we were able to make that happen, but for the future, what does that mean? Because we don't want to run into those staffing issues again. So, you know, it seems to me that they don't have a whole lot of backup people or staff who can come in in the event that someone is sick. We are coordinating more closely with them and meeting with them to find out what their needs are, what their requirements would be, and then, once I have some more of those details, then I'm happy to share those with the public. I did have a lot of people coming to me who really wanted to volunteer and help out and be there that night, and we would have completely accepted them to do that if we could have, but because of that contract with Keystone Mission to provide those services, we were not able to do that. But if someone wants to be employed by Keystone Mission or Catholic Social Services that runs St. Anthony's to be able to help them out with their shelters, then I would certainly encourage people to do that, and they do need some sort of, there's like a de-escalation training that they go through. They like for people to have experience with the at-risk community, or, you know, maybe those suffering with addiction or mental health issues. So, you know, if you're someone who has that kind of experience and can kind of work on that per diem, as-needed capacity, then, and doesn't mind, you know, being there overnight, then, you know, you can contact me, or I can put you in touch with the people at the shelters. I think that's all that I had in reference to that, but I'll be happy to answer any other questions that come up in fifth order that I can. Thank you.
Thank you.
Fourth order, citizen participation.
First, Joan Hodawanis.
Joan Hodawanis, Scranton. I'd just like to comment on this issue of the shelters for the homeless during the cold winter months. I listened to the presentation that NeighborWorks did, and, you know, some very great projects, and the city has a lot of great projects. But I think the very first obligation of the city is the safety and welfare of its residents. And if we're having an issue about being able to provide shelter when it's nine degrees for our homeless, I think the city should make it a priority and get together with Keystone Mission, the Diocese of Scranton, whoever else needs to be involved, and we need to have a plan that works. And, you know, shame on us if we could afford to fix sidewalks and curbs, but we can't, we can't find an answer to that problem, well then shame on all of us. Okay? Before I came to the caucus tonight, I was at the Scranton Public Library, on my knees with the master of the tech table, a man named Jason Klus, K-L-U-S. The man's a damn wizard when it comes to anything electronic, and he helped me with my cellphone. I was having trouble with my voicemails, and he got it to work. He didn't realize he got it to work, but as I was walking down, all of a sudden my voicemail was going off like, you know, banshee out of hell. But what I want to tell the people of Scranton, and Dunmore, by the way, and music too, right, Scott? Okay? That if you ever need help, free help, with your electronic devices, your cellphone, your laptop, your smartwatches, and whatever other doodads you have, you could always go to the Scranton Public Library at the Albright Memorial Library, 500 Vine Street, Tuesdays and Thursdays, 5:00 to 7:00 p.m., and look for the tech table on the second floor, and Jason Klus, I swear, the man's a magician, okay? He can help you. It's just one of the many services that the public library offers its residents. Library is not just a warehouse for books. It is everything you ever wanted, and it's free. Okay, enough of that. I was looking at the overtime statistics for the month of January, and I don't know, maybe January is just an unusual month. But with 12 months in the year, approximately 8.3% of the overtime budget should be expended. And if you look at some of the figures, a little more than that was come out, like for one month, Parks and Recreation used up 23.86% of its annual budget. If that were to continue at that rate for the rest of the year, they would spend 286.32% of their allotted budget. The point is, either, you know, various departments are having trouble managing their budget, or we are lowballing their requirements when we're doing the annual budget. But one way or the other, you know, somehow these budgets got to come together. The total was 13.66%. If we continued at that rate, we would be spending 163% of the budget. So hopefully, when we do the budget this year, we'll take a very critical look at the overtime budget by departments, because we just never seem to be getting our arms around this. This is year after year. And speaking of budgets, I hope we're working assiduously on the 2024 audit.
It has begun.
Moving down the road, that's good. And any updates on DPW's collective bargaining agreement negotiations? Because their contract expired in December.
Yes, I was told it's in negotiations.
Okay.
And Joan, the overtime for the parks, all of that as of now, is for the Code Blue. We have to open the Weston Field, so that's one of our parks.
See, that's justified, but then again, if that's going to be a recurring requirement, it needs to be put into the annual budget, and you need to ramp that up.
They did ramp it up this year, but this is an exceptional year, there's a lot of problems.
I know, but we need to look at that critically, okay? Because we're lowballing the requirement. Thank you.
Thank you, Joan. Thanks, Bob Bolis.
Council Bob Bolis, Scranton. First off, I'm going to start off from where we left off last week. I can't tell you my disappointment in what this council did to Sandy last week, not allowing her to speak, even if it was for two minutes. She had a right to speak. She was basically went through a live-in hell by the Kids for Cash, by Conahan and the rest of them, and the fact that Biden put him out on the street after her son came out, after they beat him up, or whatever they did there, took his own life, and yet you didn't have the compassion to let her speak for a couple minutes. Turned my stomach when I saw that go on. Jerry, let's say, let me ask you this crazy question. If she was one of your clients, and she was paying, you say, $10,000 in Luzern County to do a plumbing job, and she came here, would you have told her she couldn't speak?
Bob, we go by the rules, no exception.
Pardon?
No exception, by the rule.
You stand by last week then, right? Council has the right to change the rules. They've done it many, many times. I've been coming here for a long, long time. That was a slap in the face to her, and to all those from the Kids for Cash and the parents that went through that, and the humiliation that she came here and got from this council. I wonder where the mayor was, why she didn't intervene and come before council and say, "We want to let her speak." She had a right to speak. She had more right to speak than any of us in this room because of what she went through. And I'm just disappointed that the mayor, you guys, did what you did last week. I was always taught to respect, especially a mother. And Jessica, you're a mother. If it was your son or daughter that went through what she went through, would you have ignored her? I don't think so. The other part, the Biden signs are going to come down. I'm telling you that right here and now. I gave you 24,000, 25,000 signatures last week. 450 were from Sandy. I presented them on her behalf, and there's another 4,000, 5,000 coming. You're going to hear the voice of the people, not what you guys want with Biden. You're going to hear the voice of the people. Those signs are coming down, just so you understand it. The difference that I've been here doing this, I've done a lot for this community, one way or the other. I saw that you have something going on. They could pick up at my office, we're using our auxiliary building, but I have trailers loaded with disinfectant wipes. If they need them for their thing on February, or whatever they want to do, they could come to my office, or call my office, 346-7659, and come up and pick up disinfectant wipes. I'm donating them, as I've been donating all over the United States. I still have trailers in North Carolina, Florida, and some on their way to California, and I don't take a damn dime from anybody. So what we see here, another disappointment I have, is I saw that the DA O'Malley is going to get elevated to be a judge. Well, I've had my issues with him, where he uses the term, "He believes in the rule of law." He only believes in the rule of law, it's selective enforcement. I've been through it with him, and so have many other agencies, including police agencies, that have not been allowed to prosecute people because O'Malley won't let them do it. And now he's going to sit on the bench. I can't wait for January, where we will put up a candidate on the Republican side, and we're going to make a change in here. We're going to turn Lackawanna County red, and you're going to see the difference, because times got to change. But what I'm telling you guys, learn to respect people that come here. They have a right to speak. This is America. And it's sad that the people died in the air crash. I'm a pilot, I've flown in and out of there many, many times, and I know what it's all about. And for the carelessness, those lives were lost. I just want to send prayers to them and their families, because it was an unnecessary loss of life that should have never, ever happened. And I've been flying since the '70s, and you got a straight American flag out and spent. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bolis. Elizabeth Rodriguez?
Good evening. I am the president of Giving Back to the Community, and I am here to address a critical and urgent issue affecting our community. The rising EBT fraud is getting out of hand. This issue is not just statistics, it's a real problem impacting real families right here in Scranton, and they require immediate attention from our local leadership. EBT hacking has become a growing crisis that needs action now. While EBT fraud is a state-level issue, its local impact is deeply felt throughout our community. Local businesses will suffer as families will not use their benefits for shopping. Families are increasingly turning to emergency food banks, which are already stretched to their limits. Many are facing the heartbreaking decision of whether to feed their families or pay for rent and bills. The ripple effect of this crisis is felt in every corner of our city. This is not a new issue. This crisis has been going on for many years. Letters from the Department of Agriculture, Food and Nutrition, started being sent out since 2022, advising the states to bear caution and start implementing new technologies. It is also in that letter states that the transition to implement chip is a state administrative expense, and food and nutrition services will reimburse the states at 50%. Its effects are devastating our vulnerable residents. Thousands of families across Pennsylvania, including seniors, disabled individuals, are waking up to find their food benefits and money stolen with no recourse to recover them. Reimbursement ended December 20, 24, leaving families with nothing but a broken system. Just yesterday, Giving Back to the Community received over 20 messages from local residents, and this is not to mention last month, who woke up to discover their EBT benefits completely wiped out. Mothers with children, disabled, seniors. This crisis is not only affecting the families with children, as I said, it's affecting all those who rely on these benefits for basic survival. We implore that the City Council and Mayor Cognetti urgently call on Pennsylvania state legislators to implement enabled EBT cards, lock or unlock security, and stronger fraud protection measures. These changes are long overdue. Other states have already taken action. It's time for Pennsylvania to follow suit. The state's failure to act is putting your community, your residents, at risk, and it's time for our city leaders to demand the necessary changes. In an article from ABC News dated Friday, December 20, 24, it stated, "Pennsylvania Department of Human Services had already received nearly 15,500 stolen benefit claims as of the end of September, and had reissued more than $5 million in stolen SNAP benefits, money that could be used to implement and safeguard these cards. We implore you, your city needs you to push and advocate. We need better protection." Thank you.
Thank you. Ron Elman?
Good evening, council. Well, people, in just 10 months, we can elect a mayor after years of not having one. Maybe Ms. Cognetti can run for mayor up there in the Abingtons. That's where she seems to be most comfortable. I guess she came to catch up the next few months on four years of doing nothing for 95% of the city. But she got a bunch of happy developers anyway. And now, the United Neighborhood Center wishes to build a $22.5 million low-income project on Capousin Olive over the mine void that, like the high school is. Low-income projects aren't a plus. They take and not give. This absurdity of Mrs. Durkin seems to be disguised as affordable property, but remember the $300,000 single-family house that... $300,000 completely wasted. This would be another venture like that. This would be another venture like that. You know, they, they have to, they have, the, the United Neighborhood Center has no money, nada, nothing, zero, the big bagel. So they have to come to the taxpayers, $22.5 million. They want to get 60% from the low-income fund, and the rest in grants, grants. Instead of helping this city, we're, we're going to build a project that will deteriorate from the neighborhood. It's not going to be a nice neighborhood, no matter what you do along there, till you get some sidewalks, curbs, that you get the people to have some pride in their neighborhood. We had a business there for years and years and years. I know that neighborhood pretty good, and it hasn't done nothing but get worse than it was 20, 25 years ago when I had a building there. You know, you're talking about grants and taking monies away from a city with thousands of pre-war houses occupied by low-income and seniors mostly. This low-income fund is for them. It's for the city that's already here. Why do we have to talk about throwing away all this money on a future, in 10 or 20 years' Don't say I don't know what I'm talking about, about slums. My son lives in the project in Taylor by necessity. The place is full of people like him. But otherwise, you got to think that the cops live there, day and night. People are evicted. There's all kinds of goings-on. It's like creating poverty to have a project in your neighborhood. I lived in a project in Memphis for a short time when I worked at the hospital. So I know what, what they're like. Unless you can avoid living in one, it's not the best of life. And I, I wish to thank you for that information. I got it.
Oh, you have it?
Yes, and I, I forwarded it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Elman. Tammy Kimball.
Tammy Kimball, I'm a resident of Scranton. First, I'd like to take a minute to thank all of the people that came out Saturday night to help the Code Blue Shelter, especially Dr. Rothschild and Mr. Schmel. You guys came out without having to, to ensure that, in fact, it was open and ready to go. Even though we backtracked to let people know it was open, many of them had already tried to find a place to stay for the night and get warm, so they did not get a chance to stay in the emergency shelter. The founder of our group, Jen Reed, couldn't make it tonight, but as a fellow operator of the group Feed the Need Scranton, I wanted to make sure we were represented tonight. We deliver food, clothing, and other supplies to the people in this city who have nowhere to call home. We make sure that people are fed, warm, taken care of, but not just one night a week, but the whole week. On top of doing this, we also help the community in other ways by reaching out to see where we are needed. This past weekend, our volunteers were split between handing out food, winter gear, and blankets, while the other half helped transport items for the youth shelter from their storage space to their new location, which was supposed to have already been open but was pushed back again. We just want answers plain and simple. We've been asking for years and still don't have what we're looking for. What is the city doing to help all these people? I know that question's been asked many times before. How much funding is given to the Keystone Mission? That's the answer we want to know. The mayor of Wilkes-Barre was able to get funds from the American Resource, or Rescue Funds. Why are we not doing that here? People are suffering right now. Members of our group stood outside for hours with people waiting to get into a building that wasn't opening, and a nearby laundromat let us stay there until we got word of opening or until they closed at 10:00 PM. Jen and Tom, a member of the community that needs this resource, made calls to whoever they could. When the police were called, who were there to serve and protect, we were told there was nothing they could do. And to that, we responded, "Please have, please have ambulances ready. People are going to die tonight due to exposure and hypothermia." It's a real problem, and we are demanding real answers. We've waited long enough and demand transparency from the people who are supposed to be serving the people of the city. Homelessness is not a choice for many. It can be the result of economic hardship, health issues, or other life-changing circumstances. And to be honest, we are all just one paycheck away from it. It's time to look at homelessness not as a problem to be ignored, but as a crisis that requires urgent action. I will leave you guys with this, members of city council. We will be serving food again on Saturday night. Let me know right now which one of you wants to come stand beside us and see this and I'll ask again, does anybody want to come stand beside us and help hand out food? Thank you. You guys have a great night.
Thank you. Lee Morgan.
Good evening, council. Lee Morgan. The first thing I have here is, you know, I watched the presentation prior to council, and I think people need to realize that there were a lot of people trained to put curbs and sidewalks in this city during the Hickey administration. But Mr. Mayor Hickey killed the program. And I, I think what we've allowed to take place in our country is passing millions and millions of dollars down through nonprofits as if it's free. And then the tentacles of all that money go to all the special interests that are supporting the politicians, and it just creates a catalyst for massive poverty. And it's, it's gone on forever. I'm just really glad that President Trump's been elected, and hopefully tomorrow, he will abolish the Department of Education, because we need to do something about children in our country that aren't educated, and we have a lot of PhDs running around and administrators of school districts who don't know how to get the job done. And in my time, we were really educated in the Scranton School District. It was really amazing how well we were educated. But maybe there wasn't quite as much politics as there is now. And the amount of politics is just overwhelming, even when you look at the governor's new budget. He's going to increase spending by $4 billion, but he doesn't have the revenue to cover it. He's projecting deficits in front of himself. He's relying on selling marijuana and gambling to make, to make up the $4 billion. Where our country is just pathetic. We've done nothing but increase the amount of poverty in our own country, and the American people have finally stood up and have had enough. And they're flushing the Democrats. And with that, I'd like to say that, you know, I believe it's Dan Naylor that runs the county Republican Party. I don't know where he is, but, you know, I know he's out of town. I do know where he is, but it, it's not, it's not a point of discussion for me at this point, because I don't have to call him out and say where he is, but he's not here. And we need candidates to run to take the council seats and to take the mayor out, because we just can't continue down this road of, well, Mr. Doherty's going to support this person, and, you know, this other political person is going to support the, the present mayor. And, you know, it's not a secret that she hasn't lived in the city. Most people know that. Some people know exactly where she lives outside the city. And we have a ma, we have a council that really doesn't care about anything that's going on in our city. Even when there was corruption in licensing and inspections, they were obligated under Home Rule Charter to investigate and had the opportunity where they could issue subpoenas, and it never happened. And, and on the issue of last week, when somebody wanted to come here to speak, I've read case law, federal case law, that says that when a city receives federal money, anybody can come to this podium and speak and can't be blocked. So maybe you should have your attorney do some research, and you'll find that case law. And you'll find out that what you did here last week, Mr. Schmel, was not following the law. And the other thing I have is that for this one election that's coming up before the primary, for four weeks prior to the election, on a Saturday or Sunday, there should be a tent or some structure placed at Naug Park, and the candidates that are going to run need to come forward on those four weekends and present themselves to the public and come out into the light, and don't allow the legal women voters or any of the silliness to take place at the University of Scranton, and let people have access to the candidates and ask questions. And for this one election, I'd like to ask the city employees, the firemen, the policemen, the DPW, the clerical union, and the teachers' union, stay out of the politics for once. You've propelled terrible candidates my whole lifetime into office, and they've done nothing but lay ruin to this city. And if you want to go back and look at their own pensions, look what Mr. Doherty did when he got rid of Mellon Bank and all the millions of dollars that the pension fund lost. And I'm going to say this, you know, you appreciate people who work as city employees, but they don't belong in the politics because they don't know what the hell they're talking about. They can't even protect their own pension, and the city is just a complete wasteland. Look at your leadership. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Morgan. Scott Thomas.
Hi, I'm Scott Thomas, CEO of the Scranton Public Library. Joan, Joan did a good job there. One, Joan, and one of the things Joan did was specify our service area, which we have state-designed service areas. But one point I want to make is that when you come into the library to get the service that Joan talked about, that, you know, that she received, the tech help and everything else, too, we don't ask any questions at all about where you're from or, or anything like that. You just come in and get the service. And that includes our most vulnerable populations that we're so concerned about. So that's what the library's for. So, and one thing I did want to talk about, too, is we reopened our Nancy K. Holmes branch in Green Ridge. It is now fully accessible for everyone. And Keith Williams from the Center for Independent Living was able to come into the branch for the first time ever, and that, that branch has been open since 1891. And we're, we're very pleased that it's now accessible with a ramp and a new entrance and been completely reconfigured. And so we're, we're very happy about that. So we invite people to come and, and have access to that as well, as well as the main library here, just a block away. And also, by the way, I want to thank all the help that you folks gave. The Coroner of Green Ridge Street and Wyoming Avenue, the, the, what's called Green Light Go Grant, four years I've been asking, and it is paying for the redoing of, of the, of the, you know, the curbs and the intersection and the lights, and we're very happy about that. So that whole area there is now going to be much friendlier for pedestrians and people who, who have challenges getting around. So thank you for that. And again, we invite, we invite everyone, that's the key word, everyone, to use the library. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas. That's all for our sign-in sheet. Anyone else wish to address council?
Good evening, council. Tom Coin-Menuca. Tonight is a finance night. First off, I would like to ask, have we gotten any feedback on the Garrity's gift cards, the Beautiful Homes handout? I understand Rubicon is coming in. So if you say no to the contract, does that mean that as of now, they have not been paid? And if they are not accepted for their contract, they will not get paid from the time the contract ended? Or is this yet another unapproved extension of an expired contract? We often run into those in this city. Maybe they'll waive the charges for the millions promised and not delivered. Well, we have our Neighbor Works OECD and the City of Scranton, Project Home, selling a renovated, reduced-price home at $180,000, targeted to low- and moderate-income purchasers. Low-income, right. Target, and I expect that all the sales, as it's listed from this, will go back into the Neighbor Works coffers. Low-income will jump right on that, like the homeless touring the Code Blue who were told that the shelter would not be open on Saturday by the city of Weston, Weston Field because of the lack of staff by the Keystone Mission. I get that. Shortly after 9:30 PM, they opened up. I guess they paged the homeless in the woods after, and the homeless jumped into their Ferraris to dart right over there after getting notice. You mentioned that it closes at 7:00 AM, and other centers open at 8:00 AM. So they have to walk a mile to the closest shelter, wait outside basically for an hour in between the closing of one facility and the opening of the other facility. There's no direct bus route, especially on weekends. Have you taken the walk with bags at 7:30, was at 7 o'clock in the morning on a freezing day? Maybe you should. A few people have questions last week, and I stepped out of council before the vote. When I reviewed it on ECTV, I was shocked to find that the raise for the mayor's position passed by a three-to-two vote. It was so unexpected. So we have $180,000 rehabbed home for the poor, a $20,000 raise in the mayor's salary, the pesky Christmas non-contract lights for $80,000. I see we managed to increase the pay for the crossing guards a whole $10 a day, split $5 between the city and the school board. If you offered the teachers' union a $10 a dollar, a $10 a day raise, they would produce bricks from their backside. So crossing guards are worth $30 a day. Nice. I understand the U of S has its required public meeting forum in a meeting that the public usually does not attend. How convenient. As of now, maybe they should come and explain why the city and county should float a bond to pay off Luzern and Wilkes-Barre's bond. As I remember last time, it was ass when you refused to give them the grant, and it was voted down because of their pilot issues. How's the U of S pilot this year? Why are they not here? And why, even if we are not on the hook, should we provide $65 million to them tax-free bonds for a tax-free university, for a tax-free buildings, including a dorm that in the document says it needs fire suppression equipment? Is that an undisclosed hazard? Obviously, $65 million for health and safety and welfare is better spent on the University of Scranton and not the homeless. Last week, there was some confusion over who can speak before council, as the president was unsure if it was residents, business owners, and property owners who could speak. I get that remembering council rules he voted on at the beginning of the year is difficult, as is paying attention to the council's lawyer, who explained in the first council session, which are in the minutes. Based on the Magna Carta and more recognizable for the Revolution phrase, "no taxation without representation," that is the root of the exception. Council's rules are drawn from the Sunshine Law that allows, in this limited forum, to have some restrictions, and it also states residents or taxpayers. The first paycheck a Scranton worker gets, even if outside Scranton, gives them the right, and they pay the tax, gives them the right to speak here, no matter how small it is. You do not, if you do not know the rules, you really need to have your attorney explain them to you. And you also should have them explain disparate of treatment. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Queen. Anyone else?
Good evening, council. Virgil Argenta. Over the last year, we have been attending many city board meetings. There seems to be a pattern of abuse where the city administration is doing all they can to cause grief for the retired is doing all they can to cause grief for the retired unions, members and retirees. If it's not with their raises, or their cost of living raises, or their Medicaid reimbursement, or canceling their insurance, or deductions coming out of checks for benefits not received, or health insurance issues, then it's with promotions, testings, or vacant board seats. Members are appointed to boards with zero knowledge or experience of the board that they represent. Bullying isn't acceptable in 2025. We're all taught that. Remember these people you're playing games with? They signed a contract to put their lives on the line for us, day in and day out. They earned their benefits. They're rightfully theirs. Remember, council? You and the mayor will be getting raises, and there was nothing we can do to stop it. Or is there? We can vote. Supposedly, we're not a sanctuary city, but Part-T Page is spending an awful lot of time on the subject of ICE, United States Immigration and Customs Enforcement, and illegal aliens, doing what she does best, creating unnecessary drama and unfounded issues. What is the Scranton's mayor and/or city council's policy on the Scranton Police Department cooperating with the United States Immigration and Customs Enforcement to remove illegal alien criminals from the city of Scranton? She is saying we're not a sanctuary city, but the Scranton Police Department isn't an extension of the United States Immigration and Customs Enforcement. If we're not an immigration city, why would that matter? Does that mean that the Scranton Police Department will not assist ICE in apprehending any illegal migrants and the Scranton Police Department, if they're requested by ICE to do so? They won't show up? They'll leave another law enforcement agency hanging? Sure, it sounds like she's engaging in a politically tightrope walking, and the Scranton Police will not assist our federal ICE agents. What does the Scranton Chief of Police have to say about assisting ICE? He runs the police department, not Paige Cognetti. Council, we're all familiar with Neighbor Works. They did a presentation tonight. Do you remember voting on any funding for Neighbor Works? Would there be accounting for any funding and the disbursement of funding for the projects in the city that was given to Neighbor Works? Do we know the person who's in charge, who deals with the city directly from Neighbor Works on city projects? Is there a partnership with Neighbor Works and the city? Be interested to find out the relationship and how much money the city had given Neighborhood Works. Code Blue Night, Saturday, February 1, 2025, was canceled last minute. How does this happen? Did someone drop the ball in not opening the shelter? Is there a backup plan so this will never happen again? Another question, is this shelter being run by the city of Scranton, or is Weston Field being rented out by a third-party agency? And if it is rented out, how much is the city being paid? And is there a contract that we may view? And was it brought before council? Was council ever notified of a rental? Is there a renter's insurance policy in place to protect the city in case something happens? We have to have de-escalation certification for the caseworkers. So that tells us there may be a problem. Are there any grants awarded to the Code Blue program? And was there any grants awarded to the Keystone Rescue Mission? And if so, how much and when is it being dispersed? Is council aware of any funds being used for this program in any way? How much and where are the funds budgeted from? What account? And does it need council's approval? Do you need to be certified to run or work at this shelter, or can this anyone volunteer? Do we pay any city employees overtime to be at this facility while it's open? Thank you, council. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Good evening, Council. Mike Mancini, Scranton. Tonight, I'm going to talk about the problems we have seen with this administration, as well as prior administrations. We witnessed the Doherty administration short pay the pensions, which ultimately caused the sale of the Scranton Sewer Authority. We named the park after him. The corrupt administration of Bob Courtrite sold the largest asset for much less than many, and then there was many questions. That was the Scranton Sewer Authority. Current solicitor for the city was part of the Sewer Authority sale. Now, we have an expansion team making decisions that affect us each and every day. When you're not from here and have those humbling beginnings, like swimming in one of our seven pools that I experienced when I was a kid, you're clearly not qualified to make the important decisions. One of those decisions included two pools. For Naug, we only have one pool that will be three and a half feet deep. Pickleball's more important than kids diving into the pool to make memories. Weston Field Pool will also be three and a half feet deep. Current road conditions are poor at best. No one wants to listen. Fix is rather easy. I mentioned this several times because I'm, like many others, sick of the swerve patterns. This is how I recommend that part of this be fixed now. Allow our city clerk, Mr. Voldenberg, to contact both the UGI and PA Water to make them aware that the good people of Scranton are not happy with the poor quality of repairs in our roads after they are cut open. Proper ways based upon our ordinances that none of you have yet to address. This is how I would recommend fixing the rest of our important infrastructure, that being our roads. Cancel the $500,000 contract for ineffective pave company from Luzern County. Put our own eyes on this and other issues like engineering. Finds the utilities not holding up to our standards should be increased from 100 a day to 1,000 a day. We will get our bank for our buck. The utilities have taken it to the city residents for decades. We could have a good portion of our roads fixed, holding those accountable. Sealing our roads is critical to our future expenses. Deferring costs by treating the cracks, like PennDOT does with our roads, makes a difference. Swerve patterns suck. If one of you could just have Mr. Voldenberg reach out to the Scranton School District and get a list of bus stops, so that the administration can make those crosswalks and intersections a priority as a promotion for progress, if she promotes progress while begging for forgiveness continues. Nonprofit dilemma and finger-pointing continues while those like the University of Scranton put screws to us. Those on that list that we know need to pay their fair share, need to be contacted. There is money for so many things, including reducing taxes to our overburdened taxpayers. Seems as if this administration has no intention to better our quality of life. The recent police calls continue to be alarming. So does the way that we treat our union employees who show up proud to work daily but with no sense of direction. Code Blue, our homeless children in the Scranton School District continues to increase. There was 248 as the end of 2023 in the Scranton school system. Guess I'm allergic to poor government. My nose won't stop running. When the next meeting, when's the next meeting for the unhoused commission? Homeless children should come first. So many questions and no answers. There was one since April. One. I think the public should be made aware of it and should be on ECTV, like all of the other commissions and boards. As the mayor's race and others like council start to evolve, this independent will sit back and watch while mediocre candidates, for the most part, will point fingers with no path. Those who attend these meetings truly care for their community. Others could sit back and just blow steam while her mayor can't see her shadow in Scranton because she's never here. I love her city. Love its people. Have so many unforgotten memories, humbling experiences that will be with me for the rest of my life. Together, we can make a difference. We can make Scranton great again, and change is coming. Good evening, council.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening, council. Jeff LeBroski, homeowner, business owner for 35 years in the city of Scranton. I don't understand why we need all these studies, okay? Because what I'm talking about tonight is, Mr. Schmerl, you said last week on Luzern Street by the school, we don't know if we should put a stop sign in there or not. Why do we need to do a study on that? Put the stop sign in there. I live right by there. The cars that go up and down the street there and everything else, they fly. Somebody's going to get killed, and it's going to be a child. Put a crosswalk in. Something. There's no need for studies. You waste so much money in this city of Scranton on studies, it's not even funny. The Elm Street Bridge, who did the study on that one? Because I'd love to know. Because now I'm coming down from Luzern Street to go to work, and instead of turning on Third Street, which they blocked off, people are still turning there. Somebody's going to get killed, so somebody's coming up that street. So now, okay, let's go down the Fourth Street. I make the left down Fourth. I'm coming down by Salvation Army. The bridge is a wreck there. There's no lanes, nothing. There's no lines painted on the road. How about, how about I did my own study? I studied 200 people, okay? Let's just say off the top of my head, 200. Could be less, it could be more. First of all, the light down there should have had a turning signal in every direction. When you come down by the Salvation Army, how about we make that left lane, a left turn and straight, so the people that are coming down going right, we have the traffic flowing very easily then, because they can make a right on red. They don't have to wait for the green light. Then coming the other way, coming down from Chamberlain, you can't make a left there. You could sit at that light for an hour, and you will not be able to make a left-hand turn. Turn signal, green turn signal. Everybody knows what they are. Then, when you're coming down there by the Salvation Army, we have the railroad tracks. So now I'm sitting there watching people, and they're right on the railroad track. So now we got a line of traffic from the red light to the railroad track, and we got people sitting on the railroad track. I believe that railroad track is still used, isn't it? I'm sure it is. But anyway, so somebody's going to get killed there. I know people aren't smart enough to not park on railroad tracks, but I watched it for almost an hour there. I sat there, and everybody stopped on those railroad tracks. So now a train comes down, you don't have nowhere to go. You're dead. So I don't know why the city, and then the other study that I was really upset with was with the walkability study. We paid that man, or whoever, that corporate, whatever, whoever it was to do that study, we paid them a lot of money. I don't know if that plan's still going through or not, but they wanted to take streetlights out and put stop signs in. So somebody got up and said, how's a blind guy going to get across the street? And not one, that guy that got paid all that money could not give us an answer. So what are our studies doing for the city of Scranton but wasting our money? I'm a taxpayer here. I pay two taxes. I pay a lot of money. And I feel my taxes are just going to studies and not just getting the job done. Why can't we ever get the job done? Why do we have to start so many projects in this city when we can't even have a road that we could drive on? Trust me, I'm a mechanic. I make money off it. But I'm sick and tired of people coming to me, crying to me because they don't have the money to fix their cars. And I know it's because of our roads. Blown ball joints, tie rod ends, axles, right out of the car. So now they got to get it towed, everything. Why can't we fix some of the easy problems first here? I know you can't pave now. It's too cold, whatever. You could fill the holes in. Or when somebody does pave a road, how about we have them pave half of it or all of it, instead of just a little section that keeps sinking every time somebody goes over because they don't bank it right or do the job right? Can we stop wasting the money? And on the, on the, on the case of the homeless, can we use, maybe, I was thinking the Salvation Army? They closed that whole thing down there, the whole place down there from shopping. Can't we talk to them and maybe have a Code Blue down there for some of the homeless people to go to? It's a whole area that's not being used. We need somebody in here that's going to talk to people and get people's ideas in the city of Scranton, not these people making money and robbing us every day of our lives. Can we please just get some, you know what? Never mind. I know somebody's going to come in and change this. And it's going to be a new mayor, and I'll guarantee you, they will straighten it out. Thank you.
Thanks. Hi, my name's Rick Little from Scranton. Been in this area for about 20 years. I spent 14 and a half years in Scranton Housing Authority, public housing, Adams High Rise. And then last February 5, last year, I was evicted. I went through everything that you're supposed to do in order to do something to stay alive, and it isn't working. And then they, all of a sudden, they, you know, what I want to talk about is the chain of command. You know, you got Scranton, you got the county, you got the state, and you got the federal. And it's an atmosphere of fear, you know? I believe, you know, you're telling me that who owns, who owns the 400 Adams Avenue, the SHA, it's HUD. Oh, that's federal, you know? But they, they cut off food stamps. And, you know, you're going through all these social workers, and you don't know who you're talking to. Everything's on the phone. And anyway, I've done a lot of research, you know, and I see, I see these signs all over, all over the city, you know, "Don't Talk to ICE." What, who's putting these up? I can tell you that the Center for American Prosperity, the same guy that paid the peaceful protesters in Minneapolis and Seattle and Portland, George Soros. There's big things going on. I would not go to the Super Bowl this year because all the information of what's going on, you got this Mexican plane crashing in Philadelphia, you got the helicopter with the, you know, it's a world of narratives. That's what I was educated in, narratives, you know? And you put it together, but we're living in a Kabuki world. I handed out these things, you know, "Don't Talk to ICE," you know? This is to push the narrative. The other thing is, you know, we're talking about the DA, you know, DA Powell from Lackawanna County, you know, just like, you know, the guy that was head of Area Agency on Aging. There has to be a chain of command where you know how the government works. And it got, it got messed up. You know, this was an all-American city in 1954, when I was two years old. I lived in an all-American city in Wheaton, Illinois, 1968. My father was the head of the city council, even though I didn't even realize it. He's gone now, but, you know, he was right about stuff. The other page, you know, when you live in the public housing, I mean, it was a great thing, you know, but everything you do there, you're going to get evicted. And they know you're going to get evicted. And I thank you, Mr. Schmerl, for coming to the Scranton Housing Authority meeting, because I think it's obvious that, you know, the district attorney, Carl O'Nott, he's still running the show. They changed the characters. And they know all the judges. And all the way up, I mean, Judge DA Powell is running for the seat made open by Mariani. I've been in front of Mariani, Mariani in the district court, and then there's Mariani in the Court of Common Pleas. And it's a fear thing, you know? Fear of the judge. You have to do what the judge says. That's what every social worker says, and, you know, it's racket, you know? This page, you know, about extermination treatment, it's all about health and safety. "We're going to protect you. Going to come and spray these chemicals that I know are poison." You know, I have a UV light. I can... I didn't have any bugs or anything, but that's how they have to put that on because of Pennsylvania 1951 Landlord Tenet Act, you know? And they're breaking the rules, left and right, legally and administratively. I've been looking into, you know... And then they say, you know, "There's arson's in Scranton housing." I remember we had a fire every single week, and I'm looking into that, you know? Call the police department. Why are the police adjudicating a federal crime of food stamps that are stolen in Richmond, California? I guess I'm out of time, but...
Thank you.
That's it.
Good evening, Council. Dave Dobson, resident, taxpayer. You know, we didn't have the greatest last three mayors. I mean, we had one that the public unions, police, and fire just built up to a point where it exploded on our face. It exploded. I didn't want people withheld raises for years, and then there was horrendous spending on capital improvements. They were here looking for a $40 million capital improvement loan years ago, around 2006. Then we got a guy that was supposed to be a little bit of a local hero, and we wound up with the sewer plant sale and lots of scandal. And then we got a part-time guy that served for six months, and I wasn't favorable to him all that much. You know, he asked me if I could shoot somebody. I brought pepper spray in here. Well, you know, after you... Your party did in the gun laws, distributed 20 million ARs and stuff like that to everybody. Maybe everybody should have a gun and just beware, you know? But don't go outside with it. Now, last week, 18 inspector generals were fired. Well, back when we had the Payroll Protection Plan during Donald's last term, he fired the inspector general. And there's $60 billion missing from that Payroll Protection Plan, and requests for payroll protection were turned in for people named Poopy Panties and Mini Mouse and so on. $60 billion. And then we get cheap when somebody's down and out. We can't house them or do anything for them, or they have to just march around all day trying to keep warm until we... Something else opens up for them. I have a question for all the people out in TV land. Elon Musk, is he an American citizen? And if he is, he was probably put right to the front of the bus with his $250 million for... You know, it's just ungodly what's going on in the news with him walking into buildings and getting handed the key to the treasury, and it just goes on and on and on. This is crazy. It's insane. We're throwing out constitutional government. They're seceding. Most of the people in Congress are representing states like Louisiana, or Johnson, Speaker of the House. And they get $34 billion more in federal money than they ever pay out. So that's... They get their money back plus $34 billion. Now, California pays out $84 billion more than they ever see back. And there's going to be strings attached to the fire aid. I mean, you know, come on. New York is the same way. And I'm pretty sure Pennsylvania and some of the other states are Tennessee, Kentucky, Alabama, Mississippi. I don't think Texas because they're so wealthy, but they may be. And Florida doesn't even have a state payroll tax, so get it from there. And, oh, by the way, if you heard a story about prophylactics, that is Gaza, Mozambique. And there's an AIDS epidemic waging through there. And we also have chicken bird flu. I hope that Mr. Kennedy can come up with the vaccine. Take two, I'll take them.
Thank you, Mr. Dobson. Anyone else?
Double shot.
Mr. Waldenberg?
Fifth order, 5A motions.
Mr. Schuster, do you have any motions or comments?
Yes, I have a couple of comments. Not much to report out publicly this week, but I'd like to thank Riley &amp; Associates and those from the city that took time to meet with the residents over at Meadowbrook. They met last week to discuss some of the concerns and answer some questions. The reports that I heard back from the residents were positive. So from that conversation with those residents, I feel that the Meadowbrook project is moving along in a positive direction, and the residents there are pleased with the design at this point in time. I'd also like those that reached out to thank those who reached out to Mr. Cad... Cadlebowski? He came in last week also with some questions about Meadowbrook, and they reached out to him and set up a meeting with him as well. Some of the other requests I got from citizens and residents are being just handled individually with the city departments. I had some from South Garfield Ave, North Garfield Ave, and Dorothy Street. So I'd like to thank Mr. Waldenberg with his help, and also the help of Chief Carroll and Corporal Iannuzzo. We're starting to address some of those. I'm waiting to hear back from some inquiries from code enforcement, and items are pending, but Frank, I'll keep you in the loop. Last two things, I'd like to thank DPW for salting during the storm. They were out on the roads and very visible. And also the crew over at Rescue One, the troop from, the Boy Scout troop from Troop 50 tonight is going for a tour over there. So thank them for giving the scouts a tour. That is all, Mr. Schmerl.
Thank you, Mr. Schuster. Dr. Rothschild, do you have any motions or comments?
Yes, I have a few quick ones. First of all, something I mentioned maybe a month back that I know was sent to code enforcement, and I know they were already on top of it, but the Vine Street Station, which is located on the corner of Vine and Prescott, was a former gas station, and it's since has become like a blighted property. So there are still a number of tires and trash sitting on the property, and there are often vehicles parked there. I'm not sure if any of them are abandoned, but if we could get an update from code enforcement on that property to find out what's going on now.
I will, Dr. Rothschild.
Thank you. And I had also received some complaints, noise complaints, coming from the area of 1900 Prospect Avenue. And I'm going to, I'll send, I have some more details on the addresses that I'll send to you, Mr. Waldenberg. But I'm hoping that we can forward along the information to SPD. I know that they've been contacted before about the issues, but, you know, I think that the people causing the noise issues are like anticipate the, or see the police vehicles coming by, and then there's no noise when they get there. So I'm not sure if there have been tickets that have been given yet, but just want to make them aware, have it on their radar.
I will.
Thank you. That's all that I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Rothschild. Mr. McAndrew, do you have any motions or comments?
A couple. So two, three weeks ago, I inquired about stray dogs. We know there's a stray cat issue, stray dog issue regarding of where they being taken, where they being taken, especially in this cold weather, when they're found. Because a couple of people came to me about it, and, you know, we were told, I was told by these people that deal with it, that, you know, Griffin Pond tends to refuse if they're aggressive. So, and that's the only... So I really didn't get an answer, and then I inquired again last week. So now I got an answer as to like, what's Plan B or C if Griffin Pond isn't available? Because we have nowhere to house a mechanical anymore in this city, but we pay for it. So the response I got was Griffin Pond can accommodate most dogs brought in by animal control, provided they have the space and that the animal is not aggressive, okay? And animal control is in regular contact with other regional shelters when Griffin Pond cannot take an animal. This is including Blue Chip is the name of one, True Friends, Friends With Paw, Awesome, and Rescue Pets Serving Vets. So thanks for the answer or the response. I'll reach out to the people who reach out to me to make sure they're aware of this. Secondly, I inquired last week. That's the only response I got from my inquiries from last week. I did inquire about Gary's gift cards, that program they had this year. I asked how it'd go, any feedback, is there any cards that remain? But I didn't get a response this week. So, Mr. Waldenberg, could you... Where? Oh, Jesus.
Yeah, they put it on.
Oh, I'm sorry. They didn't put it under mine. So we distribute the first awards in late 2024, and we'll summarize. I'm sorry, that wasn't under my inquiries. Well, we're going to wait for the summary, and of course, we'll report it out when we get it. And I was also contacted about the homeless situation that happened over the weekend. And a multitude of people said, "Hey, we will help. We want to help." But, you know, we were told that there's a certification process. So, and that's what my response was because it's the only information I had. And I responded to these people saying, "Well..." And they say, "Well, can you please look into it and find out what that's, how they can attain this certification? What's the process? What's involved?" I know you both spoke of it earlier, so please, if anybody has that information, share it with us. The process, where to get certified, is it... Okay, de-escalation, I understand that. Is that also, is there also restraint training involved with that? I don't know. So is that part of it too? So we need to know this because I want to pass this along to the multitude of people that want to help. There are people out there that want to help with the situation, but, you know, let's provide some type of education awareness to these people so they can actually help. And that is all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McAndrew.
Councilman Schmerl, do you mind if I just add something because I had forgotten earlier? I did want to mention if anyone is wondering about the shelters this evening, because temperatures are going to drop again, that the Code Blue Shelter does have staffing tonight as well as St. Anthony's Shelter. So that's all.
Thank you. I have the answer. Lackawanna College, who asked if there was any city money. In the past, the college received a number of RACP and LSA grants since 2008. And the largest CDBG grant was in 2022 for $15 million, and that established New Workforce Education and Training Center in downtown Scranton. But nothing from the city of Scranton right now going to their new building. The UGI rate increase, our attorney is working along with the city law department to request a hearing, and we will hear something on that probably by next week when they get that out. Also, the manhole covers that Mr. Mancini had brought up. Mr. White, the senior superintendent from P. American Water, said he sent his team to repair, or they will repair, the manhole covers located on North Main Ave, South Washington Avenue, and Mulberry Street and North Washington Avenue. We have Mr. Waldenberg, one for code enforcement, and I believe zoning also, 916 Quincy Avenue. The building was condemned. It's now under construction. And they seem to be putting, from what I'm told, four units in it. So if we could send both and find out what's going on there?
I will.
All right. And the other thing is the CDBG grants for the small businesses, we didn't forget about those. We're still in contact with them to see what is available for that Greenridge Street project and those businesses that are down there and losing business because of it. So we haven't forgot about that. That is still out. And the various shelters that I gave you all the information on last week, all of the information I had asked to put on the city's website, and the city said they will address it. So I assume they're going to put it on. And the other thing they had asked me was about a kiosk in the foyer coming in, or something, some way to contact the city. I know the phone is gone. City evidently got new phones, but there's nothing in that foyer now. So they said they're going to be working on a device that the public can use inside licensing inspection so that you could have access to the internet and to the city website on that. I don't know how far out that is, but they said they are going to work on that and keep it in code enforcement. The last thing is pilot programs. I met with the University of Scranton with Julie Schumacher Cohen and Jerry Zabrowski. They, I had a lot of concerns about everything that people said they don't pay any taxes at all. So I assumed they didn't pay any taxes at all, like everyone else would think, because they're tax exempt. And also, they have food places in there that provide food to their students. It's also open to the public. So I did meet with them and asked them about all of that. So the food service is run, it's not really the University of Scranton runs it. So, but if, say, a student goes in for food at their Chick-fil-A, you process your card, use your card, and you go in there, and you don't pay tax on that. But if I go in and I purchase something at Chick-fil-A, I am charged tax because I don't have that card, and it's not part of the education process. So I have to be charged tax on that. So that was one thing. I was really surprised that they are doing that. If Aramark runs that, so it's not really the university that collects the tax. Aramark does that entire thing. So they're responsible for collecting all the taxes and paying the state taxes on all that food and stuff. And then I asked them about all of the properties that they have. They have properties on corners and in between buildings, some empty lots, some parking lots. And I wondered how that could be tax exempt. If it's used for a parking lot, how could it be part of the education process? It was my question. And they did provide me with all of that information. They actually do pay taxes on all of those properties, not using the education process. In 2023, they paid to the city of Scranton $197,061 in property tax. So I was quite a bit off on that. I thought they paid zero. But at least we know now that they do pay taxes on that. So I'm glad we met with them and got all of that straightened out. There is a lot more information that I asked for them and from them, and they will provide that. And I'll bring it here, and there's actually pamphlets that they've put out to show how much money they put back to the city. And I did ask them to increase their pilot, though, so... And that was the end of the meeting, but I'll get the rest of that stuff for you. And that is all I have.
5B, for introduction and ordinance, increasing crossing guard compensation to $30 per day effective January 1st, 2025.
At this time, enter the motion that item 5B may introduce into its proper committee.
So move.
Second.
On the question?
On the question, I'm so glad that this finally has come to fruition. I brought it up in the summer, prior to the school year. I know that we had to have some conversation and collaboration between the district and the city, and I'm just glad it's finally resolved. You know, I didn't look at most of the backup, but it says effective January, but are they going to get retroactive from the beginning of the school year? That's a definite? So these people will know that or need to know that?
No, the retroactivity goes back to January 1st of 2025.
Twenty... I'm sorry, what?
January 1st, 2025.
So they don't, they get retro up until January 24, from the school year?
They will not be reimbursed from September through December of '24.
I'm sorry, I can't hear. They will?
They will not be reimbursed from September to December. They will not be reimbursed from, from September to December of 2024.
Oh, that's, that's disturbing. Okay. I, I wasn't aware of that.
Anyone else? All in favor of introduction signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Eyes have it and so moved.
Five C for introduction and resolution, approving in accordance with section 147 F of the Internal Revenue Code of 1986 as amended, a plan of financing of the Scranton Lackawanna Health and Welfare Authority and declaring that it is desirable for the health, safety and welfare of the people of the city of Scranton for the Scranton Lackawanna Health and Welfare Authority to undertake a project for the University of Scranton.
At this time, entertain a motion that item five C be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question?
On the question. I'm glad to hear that you asked about a pilot update. I plan on asking that tonight as well. So I will, I will move this forward out of fifth, but I hope to get an update on that pilot update before we pass this in seventh order. Keep in mind, the University of Scranton has a $275 million endowment and I think they take about as much of that in, in, in revenue from students who attend their school per year as well. So there is enough money to go around. It is, it is good to hear that they're paying property taxes on those other properties they own, but we'll be waiting to hear if there's an increase in their pilot this year. Thank you.
Thank you. All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it and so moved.
Five D for introduction and resolution, approving the intermunicipal transfer of a restaurant liquor license R. 6234, currently owned by Don's Ruby Inc., doing business as Don's Ruby Room and located at 303 Chestnut Street, Blakely, Lackawanna County, Pennsylvania 18452, to the Roof at Oppenheim LLC, located at 409 Lackawanna Avenue, Apartment 509, Scranton, Lackawanna County, Pennsylvania 18503, as required by the Pennsylvania Liquor Control Board.
At this time, entertain a motion that item five B be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question?
On the question, so I thought this business had already been in, in operation and serving liquor. So I was wondering what, what it might have been under previously while they were doing that. So if we could inquire about that.
I will, Dr. Rothschild.
Thank you.
All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it and so moved.
I make a motion to table item five D.
Second.
There's a motion on the floor and the second to table item five D. This place, piece of legislation is being tabled to allow for advertisement of a public hearing to be held Thursday, February 18th at 5:45 PM. On the question? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it and so moved.
Sixth order, six A, reading by title filed to council number 55, 2025, in ordinance, approving and authorizing the acquisition by easement agreements, deed in lieu of condemnation or otherwise of the necessary rights, franchises, licenses, easements or titles of land required for permanent easements, permanent easements and temporary easements, and for a temporary easement only in, in order to complete the Meadowbrook flood protection project and authorizing the filing of a declaration of taking pursuant to section 302 of the eminent domain code if required.
You've heard reading by title of item six A. What is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I moved that item six A pass reading by title.
On the question?
Second.
No, he is second.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Second.
On the question?
On the question. Solicitor Gobright, this legislation is typical of a project such as this?
Yes, sir, it is.
Thank you.
All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it and so moved.
Seventh order, seven A for consideration by the Committee on Rules for adoption filed to council number 54, 2025, amending the lease agreement with Street Cats and Dogs Inc. for the property located at the Ash Street Firehouse, 1409 Ash Street, to extend the term for an additional 12-month period.
As chairperson for Committee on Rules, I recommend final passage of item seven A.
Second.
On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Mr. Smurl?
Yes. Hereby declare item seven A legally and lawfully adopted.
Seven B for consideration by the Committee on Public Safety for adoption, resolution number 175, 2025, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to accept on behalf of the city of Scranton Fire Department, a grant from Pennsylvania American Water firefighting support grant up to $1,000.
What is recommendation of the chairperson for the Committee on Public Service?
As chairman for the Committee on Public Safety, I recommend final passage of item seven B.
Second.
On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Mr. Smurl?
Yes. I hereby declare item seven B legally and lawfully adopted.
Eighth order, no business at this time.
Attorney Gobright, before we, we end, I hate to put this on you now, but I, I also was, was in belief that the raise was from the school year on. So if, I know the school district had passed it or agreed to it in December, I think the thing said, and maybe that's why I thought it was back then. If you could look into it for us and so.
If you look at the attachment, Mr. President, this was an agreement reached between the administration and the school district. The ordinance that was, or I should say the, the rule that was passed, the motion that was passed through the school district sets the date at effective January 1st, 2025, to which the city administration agreed. So the backup documents tell you exactly when they, what it was, what period of time they agreed to. And that's by their, their motion that was passed at their school board meeting.
Okay.
So maybe is that because of their, they operate on a calendar year versus a fiscal year or?
Truthfully, sir, I don't know. I wasn't, I wasn't giving them advice at their meeting, so, and I was not at the meeting.
Maybe just look at it and see if there's anything we can.
Well, I, I can reach out to the district, but I just know that that was what they agreed to.
Okay.
Yeah, that was the, the motion that they passed on December 9th.
So that would be ours needs to mimic what their agreement was. Otherwise, that means there's no agreement.
Right. Oh, okay.
I, I just thought we had some conversation previously where it was floated around that they would get, to be, to be retroactive.
We, we did. We did.
But it's alarming to see that it, that didn't happen. I mean, I know we introduced it. We have time to maybe come to some type of.
They agreed to January 1st, 2025. There's no agreement if both parties in the agreement don't agree to the same thing.
I know.
So I, I don't know. I'll, I'll be glad to make the call to find out, but that was what the school district agreed to?
Yeah. I don't agree, though. To be honest with you, I don't agree.
All right. Well, we'll try it.
Okay.
If there's no further business, entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
This meeting's adjourned. Thank you.